We'll do the roll call. Courtney?
Counselor Kesar.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
Likewise.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoy, absent. Counselor Osick.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here.
Okay. Are there any additions that go on the agenda? We do not, okay. And we'll have public comment first. Do we have a list of people commenting?
I don't know.
Okay.
Does anyone want to comment?
Yes.
Yeah. Line up. State your name, state your board or address, and you have three minutes. Stop at three minutes. Do not try to go longer. Obviously, I'm running late, so I want to catch up. So, go ahead, Michael.
All right. So, I'm Michael Slater. I'm in Ward Seven. I think, as you know, I and a number of citizens have been following the strategic plan process for quite a while, since its inception, actually, and have been able to chime in from time to time on recommendations that we think the council ought to take a look at. Overall, we think that the strategic plan is going very well, and we're supportive of the agenda and priorities that you've set. We have a couple small items, or actually, I shouldn't say small items. We have a couple items that we want to recommend that you take a look at. Just one or two. When the goal related to vibrant downtown, the vibrant downtown goal, it says, "A vibrant downtown with low commercial vacancy and high-quality housing." High-quality housing sounds great, but it also sounds a little bit exclusive, as if we are trying to create a zone particularly for affluent folks. We'd encourage you to try and expand that goal a little bit, so that instead of just high-quality housing, we have high-quality housing that meets the needs of citizens of all ages and income. What we think we've learned from the past is that having a downtown that serves only one part of the population is not a healthy downtown in the long run, and that we need to think of downtown as a neighborhood that serves a diverse range of income, and that people can stay there throughout the course of their life, not only when they're in their twenties and thirties, but also when they're raising children, and then when they retire and need to downsize as well. So, we'd encourage you to take a look at that. On the transit, the transportation component, we're well aware of the fact that the biggest issues related to public transportation are bus services, which is not the responsibility of the city. On the other hand, what is the responsibility of the city is making sure that people can get to buses safely, and that means sidewalks. It is the city's responsibility to make sure that last quarter-mile between people's homes and city bus stops are in good shape and are safe, and that children and families can get to bus stops. So, we encourage that you, we encourage you to consider really adopting a safe route to buses, just as we have a safe route to school, and that be an important part of the public transportation goal. Finally, and I don't mean to sound like a scold here, but it probably will come across this way, the opening mission statement for the city really is very hard to understand. "A safe and livable capital city with a sustainable economy and an environment that is open to all." I don't understand that, and I know that, I know that probably it could be improved quite a bit without actually changing any of the key words in there. So, I'd encourage you to do that as well.
Thank you, Michael. Want to have questions? Let's make them quick, then.
Yeah, yeah. Michael, all I wanted to, okay, all I wanted was, I liked the language that you said, "that meets the needs of all." If you could read that, read that language again.
Sure. So, the addition would be after housing, just continue on with, "That meets the needs of citizens of all ages and incomes."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Trevor Phillips. I live in Ward Three. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak this morning. I work at the Salem Hospital Emergency Room. I'm an emergency room doctor. I've been pleased to watch the progress of the strategic plan over the past several months since the open house, and I was pleased to see the mention of a sobering center. In the emergency room, you know, we take care of everybody. We are the busiest emergency room in the state. Last year, we saw 106,000 patient visits, and a not insignificant proportion of that is people who suffer from problems like intoxication. I've taken an informal poll of the people and other physicians in my group. We're the only group that serves the emergency room. There's now forty, over forty providers in our group, including my medical director, and it's unanimous. We would all love to see a sobering center. I know that getting something like a sobering center is complex. I don't know how the exact details would work. I see that you guys have worked with Marion County, as well as Salem Health, and I encourage you to continue, you know, really looking at this issue. The most precious resource we have in the emergency room is our physical space, our bed, and the patients who have intoxication tend to take up the most time. And really, the, what we do is a screening exam to make sure people are safe, and if we could have another, like, resource where we can complete our, you know, screening exam, and then they could go and just, you know, spend the time it takes to sober, would make a huge difference for us. I'm going to be a little bit corny. So, like, in Game of Thrones, they say, "Winter is coming." In the emergency room, flu season is coming. So, it gets much busier in winter time, and something like, you know, a sobering center could make a tremendous difference, and, you know, I've said it before, but it could literally save lives. So, please look at this seriously. It's important. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I assure you, we are very seriously.
Good morning. My name is Linda Walmart, and I live in Ward Three, and I am here this morning again to address the issue of a climate action plan that is going to be considered this morning as a proposed goal for the city in the strategic action plan. So, what I wanted to do this morning was just to read off the climate mayor's agreement that Mayor Bennett signed this June of this year at the mayor's conference in Miami. It's very short. "As 372 U.S. mayors representing 67.5 million Americans, we will adopt, honor, and uphold the commitments to the goals enshrined in the Paris Agreement. We will intensify efforts to meet each of our city's current climate goals, push for new action to meet the 1.5 degrees Celsius target, and work together to create a 21st century clean energy economy. We will continue to lead. We are increasing investments in renewable energy and energy efficiency. We will buy and create more demand for electric cars and trucks. We will increase our efforts to cut greenhouse gas emissions, create a clean energy economy, and stand for environmental justice. And if the president wants to break the promises made to our allies enshrined in the historic Paris Agreement, we'll build and strengthen relationships around the world to protect the planet from devastating climate risks. The world cannot wait, and neither will we." And I want to applaud the mayor for signing that. I'm very proud that you did that. I want to draw our attention to the phrase in here that says, "We will intensify efforts to meet our city's current climate goals." We have done many things in Salem that, in fact, indirectly do address climate. It wasn't deliberative. It sort of, it's just part of, certain environmental actions have that effect. And I think that we have done many of the things. We've seen a list of it that was prepared by the staff, and that we have done many things in this city, but we do not have specific climate goals. And so, I really am here again to urge that we have a specific climate action plan, because we do already do a lot of good things for the environment. I'm not worried as much about that, but we do not have a climate action plan. We don't have climate goals. So, I'm here to really promote that and urge that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? All righty. Anyone else?
Somebody texting it in.
Good timing.
There was a little tweet.
Okay. We'll move on then, and I'll turn it over to Brian, who will lead us in our further discussion.
I'm Brian Scott with BDS Planning. I'm part of the Echo Northwest consulting team for the strategic plan and acting as the facilitator this morning. I want to give you a quick process overview refresher, remind you where we are in the process, and talk about the meeting format. We already had the public comment. So, where are we in this process? We've been using this diagram that's on the screen all the way through the process. The strategic plan has three phases, a situation assessment, a strategic plan, and a transition plan. We are squarely in the finishing, right, kind of finishing up Phase Two and moving through Phase Three at the moment that you're finishing the strategic plan decisions tonight, or this morning, and moving into the transition plan about how do we implement the process going forward. And the city manager will be expanding on that in just a moment. Ground rules for the meeting, just like the previous meetings that we've had. Everyone's voice counts. Please take turns and avoid airtime. Each perspective is valid. Listen respectfully, and questions are okay. We have quite a few goal statements and a bunch of actions to review this morning, and we're going to have each, the council members that worked in the individual work groups present those, and then we want to get questions and clarifications about where those are. We don't have time to do just a ton of wordsmithing on each of these. I think we want to make sure we have clarity and agreement on basically what those concepts are. I think the work groups have all done quite a lot of really good work to get there, so I'll be asking you for forward movement, positive recommendations, and a working consensus of can you live with this to move forward with the plan. So, we've already done the public comment, and Steve, you were going to give an overview on what comes next.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. While today's, this morning's focus is on really getting the strategic plan done, and I want to thank you for taking a Saturday morning to do that. This work this morning is really important for having an achievable multi-year strategic plan, and while that's the focus of this morning, I did want to share with you for a few minutes what's going to be coming and how the organization, how the staff will be, will be implementing what council has for a strategic plan. A reminder, one of the reasons for starting the strategic plan was to have policy drive the budget. Council President McCoy likes to use the term, or at least I've heard him tell me a couple of times now that I've, now that I've been here about two years, that the budget was a cake that was already baked by the time it got to the Budget Committee and Council. And one of the, one of the goals, I think one of the measures of success for the strategic planning process will be to reverse that, where council policy will drive the budget. And by having a work plan, which Brian will help us, help you get to this morning, that will really be the pivot to allow policy to drive the budget, because you'll have the issues, goals, and actions, the ingredients for the cake, and then through the annual work plan or policy agenda of council, you will be giving staff the direction on what is the most urgent, what is the most critical for the first year, and then the following years in the strategic plan. Council sets the policy, staff implements. Fortunately, we were able to get, the timing worked where we were able to get a jump start on several, or at least one of the significant issues, the vision for growth and development. There's funding in the current fiscal year budget to begin that visioning and comprehensive plan process. The leadership team, that staff team, is going to be using the strategic plan, and through an organization-wide and community-wide mindset, will be really implementing that plan. The resources in future budgets will be allocated to accomplish the outcomes in the plan, support decision-making capacity, and ensure quality. My pledge to you this morning and going forward is the organization will deliver on the council outcomes in the strategic plan. To do that, it's really important, though, for council with input and advice from, from the senior leadership team, the senior managers, to help with what's practical, what's realistic, what is achievable, because the plan really does need to be an achievable working document and not a document that ends up on the shelf. The meshing of the strategic plan with our budget process is going to be critical. Overview, handout, page two at the bottom is visual that begins to share with you and the public how that will look, the strategic plan, next steps. You're scheduled to adopt the strategic plan at your October, second meeting in October. In December, you might groan a little bit, because we're just finishing the strategic plan, but we're going to start again with a community survey and outreach to boards and commissions, and then in January, council will have an opportunity to adjust that policy agenda, adjust the work plan from that input. You're going to realize, just getting it done in October, but we're going to start up. And I think it'll become less, less clunky as we get into, and again, the, our systems and processes will mesh, you know, going forward. February, March, budget development for fiscal year '19. April, May timeframe, the Budget Committee meetings. One of, one of the goals will be for those Budget Committee meetings to focus on the outcomes and, and work plan, and perhaps less of the presentations from, from the departments on this is who we are, this is what we do from year to year. It'll be more focused on what's coming for that upcoming fiscal year. I will have a more detailed schedule for you in October as part of the adoption of the strategic plan, which will have, if you're interested, it'll be available even if you're not interested, but for those who perhaps want a closer look at how is this going to mesh together the details, that will be available in October. Because it will really take the planning and evaluation role of council with the budgeting and operations, which are primarily a staff responsibility, and put those together into a budget that will be on an ongoing annual cycle. That's what's, how it's coming, how it's going to work, and again, we'll have more detail for you in October. Thank you. And I'd be happy to, if there are questions on that, be happy to answer those.
This is maybe nitpicky, sorry. This handout's going out to the public. Is that correct? Is this on the website, this one?
Which one is that one?
The situation assessment.
The entire situation assessment is 22 pages and is on the website. I've only just finished this, and we'll put it up.
This handout?
The handout is just a primer on it.
I think it's great, just two quick little typos, I think, and the next step section, winter, I don't know if it's supposed to be 2017 or 2018, and the spring, I think it's supposed to be 2018.
I'll fix those. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes?
I'm usually the one who does that.
I know.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I fell down.
Really?
I do want to say to the city manager that I appreciate what you said about the budget process, because I've now been through three of them, and there's a lot of time spent by the department heads telling us, "This is who we are, this is what we do," and I think we all know that now, and I think it would be, it's a very good idea to have them get right into it, so it dovetails with the process we're doing now.
If I may, quickly, in part of that transition, I don't want to suggest that awareness and information regarding the departments, regarding what the city does, will stop. We'll just have to do it a different way with new council orientation or public outreach, but the Budget Committee meetings will not be, that will not be the primary forum for...
Any further? Okay, Brian?
Great. So, the next piece of the agenda is to walk through the seven goal areas and nine goals that you've identified in your earlier work session, and then the specific actions that have been developed through the work by the individual work groups in the months since we met in the spring. And we're going to just walk through them one by one, and I'm going to ask the council member who is speaking for that to give us a quick overview of the work of your group and the action items that are there, and get any clarifying questions from counselors, or if we need to make a change, we'll, we'll do that. And we're going to, we've got about 15, 20 minutes for each of these, so we can get through all of them, and then we'll do a little exercise at the end where we talk about which of these actions are most urgent or those that give you concern. But first, I want to make sure we all know what all these groups have done. So, Counselor Cook, are you about to, you just sat forward like you were about to say something?
Just changing my posture.
Okay. Very, very good.
You're on the mark.
So, we're going to start with a vision for growth and development. Counselor Lewis?
Well, one thing about going first is I don't have to follow anybody really good or complete. The report on the strategic plan work group for growth and development, there was actually only one meeting that was held on April 6th. The council members attending were Counselor McCoy, Counselor Cook, Counselor Nanki, and myself. The staff was Lisa Anderson Ogilvy, Brian Colburn, and Eunice Kim, and there was one member of the public that was in attendance, and that was Lori Doherty. It became clear, and thus one meeting, that the main issue for the growth and development is the absence of a clear, clear direction that the group felt a update of the strategic plan, I mean, of the comprehensive plan, is what would be the most valuable. Getting public input and, and public buy-in. Our current comprehensive plan is old, and there was a concern that it really didn't have and doesn't have community buy-in, and so therefore is not a useful tool, and the goal is to have that useful tool. The issue specifically was Salem's existing vision for growth and development, as encompassed by the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, is out of date, and has been developed over the years in a piecemeal fashion that has resulted in disconnected ideas for how the city should grow. The existing vision also lacks awareness and ownership of the community, so that was the issue. The vision was to develop a comprehensive, long-term vision for future growth and development in Salem that has community buy-in and ownership, and the recommendation was just that simple one, not simple, believe me, not simple, but to do a comprehensive plan. There has been money allocated to do that in the current budget, and, and this is the key, at least for me, the success of these activities will be measured by the volume of diversity and participation from residents and partner organizations in outreach to support these initiatives. Personal comment, I, there needs to be multiple ways to engage the community, so we can, in fact, have a sense that we are hearing from a majority. I'm not critical at all, but there's been, and everybody knows this, there's been a lot of times where a group will come in and, not overpower, but, but give a one voice, and the community stands quiet. And so, the goal here, and, and what I appreciate about the measurement tool is, the measurement of this goal is going to be participation. So, if we get 2% to participate, we fail. If we get 80% to participate, what a great success. That's the goal. That's it.
Questions about the goal of vision for growth and development, or the, the two action items related to a visioning process and a comprehensive plan update? Does everybody feel better about my yellow ink now?
Yes.
Counselor Anderson?
I don't know if this is a question so much as a comment. You know, the, the words, "community buy-in," and there was another one here that I can't seem to find, "community buy-in and ownership." I'm not sure what those words mean, and I don't know if they can be defined any more succinctly, but also, I think we also need to recognize that this is a representative democracy. You know, we're elected to, to voice our opinions, and we get elected because of our opinions, and in some instances, we're elected because the voters trust our opinion and our judgment. So, we're not just here to listen to what the community wants and how we define that and how we say what the majority is or the majority isn't. We need to exercise our independent judgment to come up with our decisions. So, I don't know how that can be looked at in here, but I don't necessarily think that it's always true that the highest number of people on any issue mean it's the issue, we should go that way in our decision-making process.
Okay. Well said. Counselor Lewis, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I take it a little bit differently. Overall, if we can't get a certain element of the community to engage in what we're doing, then we fail. It doesn't matter their opinion. That's not the issue. It's the engagement, it's the level of engagement. It's the number of people that we hear from. There isn't, in my opinion, a single issue that could generate that amount of input. There has to be an overall widespread involvement, and that's, that's something that I think every community struggles with, but I think well enough of Salem that we can be, we can do well at that. It's just how. And it's, and the group, at least, felt the combination of things will accomplish that, including polling, including the open houses, a combination of things, but it's, it's not necessarily what we hear, it's the fact that we hear from enough folks that we've got a sense to drive me. I was elected three years ago. I don't go by what, what happened three years ago. I have to keep up, and minds change, views change, and that's the goal, is to get enough feedback that we feel comfortable in our positions making those decisions.
Counselor Anderson?
I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I, being a lawyer, I fall back on a concept that is known as due process. And due process, when you boil it down, means notice and an opportunity to be heard. And so, those, to me, are the important things we need to do. Give notice, give people an opportunity to be heard, and if the people have noticed and have the opportunity to be heard and choose not to exercise that opportunity, so be it. And that's where we, on our own, have to exercise our own independent judgment, and we arrive at that judgment through all the modalities that have been discussed here and have been discussed in the committee reports, but we still have to arrive at our independent judgment.
So, I don't hear you disagreeing with the need for a visioning process or a comprehensive plan update.
Oh, no, 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 not at all.
You're just maintaining the council's ability to make decisions informed by those processes. Correct. Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Kesar?
Thanks. I guess I just wanted to ask the, what does the visioning process look like? Because I, I mean, I have kind of nebulous ideas in my head of what that might be, and my, I guess my follow-up question is, for this action number one, is there going to be something else specifically under it saying, "And that means dun, dun, dun?" So, I'd like, I guess, more specificity about what that means, what, what is visioning process? How do we communicate that out to the public? How do I go to neighborhoods and say, "We're going to do a visioning," and, and their response is going to go, "What does that mean?"
At the level of a strategic plan, it's often not real specific about how you're going to implement all the actions, but, good question. Counselor Cook?
I think, thank you, Brian. I think the comprehensive plan update is very specific, and I would defer to Lisa Anderson will be about that, but it has specific marks in it.
Your number-one action here is conduct citywide visioning process to determine community goals and priorities for future growth and development. And then the update is the second action. So, and I don't disagree at all.
No, no.
There's definitely processes, but I'm just wondering what that first action...
What the visioning process would entail?
Yeah. What, what is that exactly? What, what's the goals of that? Well, I guess it's the community goals and priorities.
Yeah, and I don't believe that we got into that level of specificity. The assumption was that there would be a professional, a consultant hired to walk us, walk the community through the comprehensive plan, and that it, it starts, quite frankly, I remember the process in Correll's 25 years ago, it starts with population. What is the view of the population number? Is this a community that wants to discuss that, or do we just take the numbers that are given to us? And it goes from there, but as far as this group, there wasn't specific things set out.
One more question. What was, what were you guys thinking for timeline? Would that be... Would that be done, like, in the next year, or?
No, the comprehensive plan probably takes...
Well, or the visioning, your action.
Oh, I, a year or two? A year or two? I don't want, Lisa has any specific things laid out, but...
Hi, Lisa Anderson Ogilvy, your planning administrator. The visioning, we're going to start in the spring, and we don't know exactly what that's going to be because we haven't started the project yet, so we're going to be talking about that. We're going to be talking to other cities that have done comprehensive plans and visioning recently, and of course, working with a consultant. One of our, our ideas at the moment is to do it in the spring and summer because we really want to go to events that are already happening. Where people in the community are already there, so we're not necessarily asking them to come to City Hall on a Wednesday night, you know, at 6 o'clock. Instead, we could go to events that are already happening. I mean, we're going to do a, a combination of things, you know, surveys, polling, open houses, but going to events that are already happening. We've been really successful in the NESC A-LANCING Plan doing, doing that and getting to people that aren't necessarily there to talk to city staff, but we get to talk to them anyway, so that's something we're going to do. We think the visioning will probably take about a year, and then we would take that information and feed it into the comprehensive plan update, which would be more technical work with committees and advisory committees, that kind of thing.
Okay, I'm hearing comfort with this process, more specificity desired, but will, will follow. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you. And before Lisa got up, I was going to hit kind of the same thing, you know, and Counselor Anderson had an issue, and I do to some extent as well, as far as has community ownership and buy-in, and essentially, it's the public participation process, has community participation and acceptance overall, and acceptance versus buy-in, I think, but I don't necessarily want to wordsmith it, but the process will be the process, and I think we can all envision what that is. How we phrase it here, I don't think has a lot of bearing on that.
Counselor Anderson?
I'm certainly comfortable with the term "participation" is how I might interpretate, interpret community ownership and buy-in.
Okay. So we'll be advised that we should attend to that language in the interest of getting through this. I think there's general agreement here, we should move forward. So the second goal area, Courtney, you want to advance this slide?
Yeah.
Oh, you got to move, that's a lot of trouble. Is sustainable service delivery, and Counselor Anderson, that one's in your court, is according to my notes, you look very surprised by that.
Yes, I do, but I can read as well as anybody else.
Excellent.
And I will have to say, I joined this group thinking it was sustainability as opposed to financial sustainability, but I certainly went to all the meetings, and our goal is to achieve alignment between city services and available resources and maintain fund balance for the future. And the discussion behind this was that demands on the city are, I'm speaking generally now, demands on the city and city services are increasing while revenue sources are declining. And that's not two good lines on a, on a growth or a graph chart. So we need to do a couple things, and, and again, I'm speaking generally here. We seem to all feel that with respect to doing more with less and streamlining city services and becoming more efficient, we're doing a good job with that, but we could always do better. So the first action, as was discussed already by the city manager today, really redesign the budget process, so planning and the annual work plan is what drives the budget process, just like Counselor McCoy talked about it being a cake already baked, and those of us who have, excuse me, enjoyed the fruits of his wife's baking, understand that analogy. I always say that by the time it comes to us, the budget process comes to the council, all we're really doing is nibbling around the edges. We're not really looking at the substantive things. So the redesigning the budget process in the way the manager discussed will be quite helpful in that process. Number two was to identify the appropriate level of service the city can provide, and we had quite a lot of discussion about that, meaning what level of service are we going to do? And if we want to achieve this level of service, we have to have some funding to make sure we can be able to achieve that level of service, or at some point, do we need to say, because of no funding, we're going to lower the, the level of service, and that, of course, ends up with some hard choices. Number three was to explore new additional revenue resources and look at adjustments to fees for general fund services. And again, that's to close the gap between the cost of the services we're providing and the money we're obtaining for those services, and we don't need to go into all the potential, but there's a lot of things there that can be discussed in terms of revenue sources and adjustment to various fees. And then, number four was to look at the feasibility of alternative methods of service. Two things. One would be contracting out services, which, again, I'm speaking, I think, more personally, those things need to be looked at quite with a, a good magnifying glass, because it may well be that contracting out won't save us as much money as we think it might save us. We may be able to do things more efficiently, effective in-house. And the second one is creation of a service district within compression, that's the whole tax thing, limitations. In other words, and in fact, from the council's point of view, we discussed this a little bit as a potential for the bridge out in Ward Four that needs to be built, but how are we going to pay for it? That, that could be a, a service district there. And then we had a long discussion about auditing, what kind of, do we want audits? Do we want independent audits? Do we want the audit we're having now? Do we want a separate city auditor? There's, and that's been a discussion in the budget committee too, so we're going to look at that issue again.
Lot of specificity on actions on that one. Are there questions or comments about those? Counselor Hoy?
I was just curious, was there any discussion about urban renewal areas as it relates to this issue?
No, I don't think there was. I think, I don't know, was the ma, I think, were you in this group, Mayor? I can't...
I was in this group.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I don't think there was any discussion about that, but I, I have noticed in some, some of the materials I read for today, and I can't remember where, there was a discussion about urban renewal groups and do we want more urban renewal areas, excuse me, and do we want more, but it came under something other than sustainable service delivery.
Counselor, I, just a question. Are you looking at urban renewal areas because of their impact on, on general fund? Okay.
That's exactly it.
That's something you'd like to have looked at?
I think it's a fundamental impact on our, on our general bud, on our general fund budget, and I think that, I'm not advocating one way or the other, I just think the issue needs to be looked at, and I think this would be the place to do that.
It's a very good recommendation.
Good point. Other comments or questions? We can move forward then. So then, the third area. Thank you, Courtney. The, the third area is economic development and downtown. Mayor Bennett, this one's in your court, and there's two goals related to it. The first one's about economic development.
I'm just looking at which one of these things I'm supposed to be using here. Oh, I see it. Yeah. Yeah, the first goal is a vibrant downtown. That should be news to absolutely nobody. If none of you have run on that, you will at some point in your life, run on a vibrant downtown. You're lucky right now you've got one. With low commercial vacancy and high-quality housing, I think Michael's suggestion that that housing be, that statement be broadened to include all economic groups...
Citizens of all ages and incomes.
And ages, yeah, is really a good one. Too long downtown has been for low-income old people, and getting that balanced is really important, that we get that housing...
I don't want it to swing the other way.
No, we want to keep it, and it hasn't, luckily. We still continue to have way more homeless, way more elderly, way more poor people in our core area, but we need to make sure that there's a balance there. And particularly as we develop, and I think the reference is more to like new housing, new units or re-refurbished units, making sure there's a broad opportunity there. I thought that was a really good suggestion, to make sure we don't get caught, again, the way that has been, which was a deteriorating downtown providing low-income housing, and that's all it did. So I think there's a real opportunity here to talk about it. What's the second one?
Economic development goal?
Ah, then the greater survival rate for small business, growth of existing businesses, and attraction of new businesses. I think that's sort of enough said on that. We are looking at a whole range of programs in the city you all have been involved in, but I think they're ones that we need to be sure to look at during the budget process, making sure that we have the kind of entrepreneurial support groups, that we develop an airport business plan, that it not just be sort of free-floating in any way, that we get a plan in place for how we're going to develop out there. There are real opportunities, but there are real barriers to the business development, and we need to figure out how to do that. And, I don't know, maybe I'm the only person on earth who watches things buffer all the time, but having a faster broadband system in Salem available community-wide, I think, should be a really important goal. I'd like to see it available free, but that's just me. I think it should be looked at, though, as a, a real goal to work either with the providers or ourselves at getting that available, and really, I, I just think it's essential service now for any kind of business development, but it also is if you're trying to keep track of your kids, so take it both ways.
It's not just you.
There are other areas that were included in this, and I'll be glad to answer any questions about them. I know there's discussion of potential new urban renewal areas that go on in the core area, I think would be interesting to discuss, look forward to it. A downtown entertainment district has been talked about for a number of years, was initially brought up by Ward Two Counselor Laura Tesler, and I, we looked at different parts of town, and clearly downtown has developed over the past four, five years, really, to become an interesting area to look at for potential downtown just entertainment district, and what all that means. What does that mean? What are we thinking of? And then I think one of the bottom-line issues too for us, as we start looking at redevelopment over closer to the Marion and Center Street bridges, whether it's the UGM side, or that whole block, or whatever, is what are we going to do at Marion Square Park? Are we going to do anything at Marion Square Park? And if we are, what does redevelopment or reuse of that park or changing its direction look like? What, what's going on there? And hopefully keeping it, well, not hopefully, but keeping it as a park, just what kind of public space is that? What's it, what's it for? What's it do?
Great. So there's a couple of long lists for a couple of goals. Counselor Hoy?
I just wanted to add my support for adding the language that was suggested by Mr. Slater to the end of the vibrant downtown goal. I didn't know if we were actually going to make that adjustment, or I saw several head nods, so...
So, if I may, the two phrases that stuck out were the citizens of all ages and incomes, and a neighborhood that serves a diverse population.
Yeah.
I think that those would be simple enough to break down and include.
It would be a tremendous change from its current targeted use for low-income elderly and homeless. I think it'd be a tremendous thing to really start talking about it seriously for all, for all ages and incomes.
Counselor Anderson?
A comment, and then more, something in the nature of a broader observation. I certainly see now where the goal is explore the need for feasibility of new urban renewal areas, and I agree with Counselor Hoy and the mayor and the group, we need to look at this. And I'm suggesting, I'm looking for the city manager, here he is, that we may, that may be an idea for some work session at some point in the future, you know, because urban renewal districts never quite seem to die, they sort of gradually fade away, and, and so we just, I think we need to have a broader discussion of that. The other one is the nature of a broader observation, and I'm looking at this from the material, not that we was handed out today with the red things, but in the material that was given to the counselors and to the public for what was happening today. And I'm looking at page five of nine, the economic development downtown. And I, again, I know I don't, we don't want to wordsmith here, but I think that's where the first sentence says, "Growth in business, investment, jobs, and wages are necessary to improve economic vibrancy and livability in the city." I can certainly agree that those might be necessary with respect to economic vibrancy, but I think it's really kind of backwards in terms of livability. I think we need to make the city as livable a place and enhance its livability, whatever that term is, by the things we've been talking about, improving downtown, making downtown vital, keeping small businesses here, encourage their growth. And I think we really say that in the last paragraph, we're talking, or last sentence of that paragraph, we're talking about livability, where we say, "Salem's comparative advantages, the city's location, access to transportation, supply of development-ready employment land make Salem attractive to companies who want to grow, expand, or locate in the Willamette Valley." That's part of livability, and, and at least I would switch that paragraph around and put that sentence first. I mean, and, and you've all heard me say this before, you know, to the mantra, "Jobs, jobs, jobs," you know, I would reply, "It also needs to be livability, livability, livability." And some of the things that we've been talking about here, safe streets, development of parks, all these other kind of things, that's what makes the city a livable place, because in terms of what advantages we can supply to businesses moving in here, if we're looking at that, every city up and down the valley can, can basically provide those same advantages, tax breaks, abatements, and everything else, and the difference that we have in Salem is the livability of our city, its location, and those are things we ought to emphasize.
And they're both there. Certainly switching them around, I think, is, is perfectly reasonable. I, I think we have to be very cautious with the build-it, and they will come, they will come if you pursue them too, and we have to be, we have to be in both, both camps, I think. I know you mean that, and, and I think we don't want to downgrade either one of them. It's very important on both, and our success over the past 20 years, I think, has been based on a balanced approach in those two areas, and we need to keep it up. I agree with you.
Slight suggestion about re-ordering there. Any other comments or questions related to economic development in downtown, either the economic development piece or the downtown piece? Okay, so we are caught back up. You're doing very well, you're being focused on task. My agenda says we're going to take a break now. Do you want to take the break, or you want to do one more of these before we do?
Break.
Take a break? All right, so let's, it is, according to my sources, it is 9:38. Let's get back together at 9:50. So take a 12-minute break. Okay, let's get going.
About 5:45.
Let's get back together at 9:50. So take a 12-minute break. Okay, let's get going.
About 5:45.
5:45.
5:46, 47, maybe.
And a half.
Got it. What's that? Okay, so we're doing really well so far on timing. We're still, in fact, a few minutes ahead of schedule, which is great. We have gotten through three of the goal areas of the seven, and seems to be going fairly well. And I guess I'm, just remind everybody what we're doing is having a quick report out by the councillor that's reporting out for the work groups, on what you did at the work groups, and then clarifications or adjustments from others, and it seems to be going fairly well. I think we'll just continue with the same process, and hopefully we'll stay on target. The next goal area also has two parts. It's affordable housing, homelessness, and social services. And Mayor Bennett, that one's on you as well.
Well, we have a couple of goals in affordable housing, social services, and homelessness. This is obviously a complicated area, it's one that involves the Housing Authority, so for those of you who are members of the Housing Authority, this will be, a lot of it will be on your plate. I'm just a councillor, so. But I did get a chance to work on this one. We're going to, our first goal was housing security for all Salem residents. That is a broad, broad statement, it's a broad, broad problem, and one that we felt needed to be dealt with. But it also resulted in some suggested actions that we really need to look at, a sustainable and substantive funding stream, and really no definition of where that would be. There are not a lot of clear avenues for that kind of funding that are available, that really, and it's where you have both sustainable and substantive. So there, it's an issue that we will look at closely, I think, probably try to aim it at a revenue committee at some point, to really try to figure this one out. And then that the city has a real role in meeting both resident engagement and the, sort of the integrity and livability of neighborhoods by thoughtful selection and design of affordable and other kinds of housing, but particularly for new affordable housing, and that it needs to include a real priority with transit and proximity to services, as well as making sure that they aren't just sort of freestanding, isolated units, but that they really create a sense of community. The second goal was accessible health and social services for Salem residents. This gave us a chance to talk about the implementation of our Housing First strategy for the homelessness, for the homeless, the housing rental assistance program, which is underway. That includes dealing with homelessness in a really holistic way, using Housing First and wraparound social services. We wanted to look closely at how we will maximize funding for these social services. We currently have part of our general fund devoted to this, and then really excellent work by the Housing Authority and others maximizing funding, but there is interest in looking at other kinds of social service funding strategies, particularly as it relates to housing and urban development, and some of the other programs that are out there, how we're going to access maximum funding in that area. Then there's a proposal to fund and implement a program for rental assistance for homeless people, a program that we already have in place for certain types of homeless, we're working with multiple. I think that's part of the issue that we really are understanding more clearly, is homelessness is not a single issue, it is multiple issues. And there are folks who are coming into homelessness and out of homelessness, and they have different needs than people who are chronically homeless, and have health-related or addiction-related problems. And then we did very strongly support a sobering and recovery center. At this point, we're focusing on a sobering center, and then looking at how the recovery would be integrated into it, by looking at who the management group might be in a thing like that. We're working closely with the, with Marion County, as well as with the hospital, with the medical community. Those are the two most impacted agencies, along with the city, in trying to deal with this issue. We will start small, make sure it works, and hopefully it will grow to deal with the level of the problem we're seeing in the community, and it is, it is severe. The impact on healthcare costs in this community is just staggering for this population group, and we need to come to grips with this. It is resulting in misuse and overuse of hospital beds in the emergency room, as we heard earlier from Dr. Phillips. This is a real, but it goes beyond that. It also has resulted in misuse of jail beds and other kinds of pro, these are not for this population. What we need is a recovery center, so we're working on that as well. That's it.
Great, thank you, Mayor. That's so, big challenging issues related to affordable housing, homelessness, and social services, with a set of actions both for housing security and for health and social services. Questions or comments from other councillors? Councillor Osset.
Just in reference to the site-selection portion that you mentioned, considering the housing dispersal, especially multifamily and affordable housing being dispersed across the city, I know a lot of folks in Ward Five are concerned that we're the ground, the nexus of that, that development, as opposed to.
Join every other councillor in their ward, you believe their ward, that residents in their ward have a similar impression, I think. It's, it is, but I think there is really, it's a response to, like Ward Five, Ward One, and others, that they feel like a lot of this gets focused into these older, older areas, and areas of lower income. So I think we have to be very, well, and your ward as well, Councillor Hoy, we have to be very, very cautious about this, make sure we're not aiming them at that, that's the concept. And hopefully that'll be part of the comprehensive plan discussion as well, that we'll get that into it. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I know other cities have policies around that, and I think Salem should look at one of the policy around dispersal as well.
Yeah, yeah, we've done a reasonable job here, but I think the perception is skewed at times, too, and we need to make sure we understand where it's real, where it isn't, and how we can fix it. So there's some baseline data that probably doesn't exist right now, we need to get our hands on.
Councillor Kaisner.
Thanks for the goal for the housing security, the action number one, creating a sustainable substantive funding stream. Was there a discussion about what that might be, or where it would come from, or?
Well, it's all kind of seat-of-the-pants discussion at this point, but I think generally folks are looking at potentially using an inclusionary zoning strategy, there is also an excise tax on new construction that's been talked about, and there'll be a bunch of them, there's a lot of discussion that needs to go into this, particularly when you're in a market like ours, where we're really in a very good place of affordable housing, making sure we don't somehow skew low-income housing to a higher cost, and create the problem that we would try to be solving. So we'll be, I think it's something we need to really spend some time on. This is not an easy one for cities to pay for housing, this is not an easy project for this kind of thing, so we'll have some work to do.
But I do see now in the staff report, there was a strategic tools for increasing affordable housing matrix, I guess, on there.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, this matrix is great, it's really exhaustive, it's really tiny print, too, so.
When you bring it up on the computer, you can.
There is no way to get this font bigger, I'm learning, but anyway, it's, it's very interesting. I've got to compliment the staff at the Housing Authority, who was the staff for us on these, on this work group, I thought did a really great job. Councillor, you feel the same way? Yeah, I thought they did a good job for us.
Councillor Anderson.
Thanks, I want to echo a little bit Councillor Osset's comment, and as much as I hate to bring up the example of our neighbor to south, to the south, I was on the joint housing committee of the City of Eugene in the late 80s or early 90s, and the city had a housing dispersal policy for that same reason, and part of our job on the joint housing committee was going around buying up land in all areas of the city, so when we had the money, we could put affordable housing all through the city. So I certainly think it's a good idea to get some sort of baseline understanding of here's where the housing is right now, both to give us an understanding, but also we may be able to disperse the perceptions that it's all here, you know, it's all in my, in my neighborhood or my ward. Or we may be able to find it is all in one place, but we need to know so we can move on that.
Anything else? Sounds like pretty good support for that. Councillor Kaisner.
Sorry, I just wanted to add in, I think it's really good, I really appreciate that comment, Councillor Anderson, because I think it's good to know where your baseline is. And I was looking at this strategic tool, and there's a, I don't know, it's a recommendation or idea, but doing basically a, what public property is also out there? So I don't think we have a good grasp on that either, or the community doesn't, because I've been asked that, especially for people who are interested in like, you know, let's put up temporary small houses to house homeless individuals, but where could we do that at? And knowing where those sites are available, so I think the data's always good, so that we.
I think we have that data, I'd be glad to get it to you.
Those data-driven, yeah, and then, and then just compiling it, you know, finding that out.
Councillor Nagy.
Thanks, yeah, just to kind of tie onto that, and loving acronym, Smurphles was a wonderful program in regards to multifamily, and finding places for it distributed throughout the city. And I think we're in that process again with the, looking at what we have for buildable lands out into the future as well. That being said, and I know that former councillors, multiple back have always commented on multifamily in wards specifically five and six. And typically when you see a multifamily development public hearing come here, typically in wards four and seven, you get a lot of residents who are close to that coming in and testifying, and when we see them in wards four, or five and six, we don't get a lot of residents coming in here. So we may want to look at how we engage communities that feel like they're overburdened with that, and gets more people to the table here to talk to us, and what that does to their areas. And I don't know if it's because they just aren't engaged with their neighborhood as much, multifamily's tough as far as getting to know your neighbors as well, but something we should be looking at.
Councillor Kaisner.
Just to, I guess to add on to that, or a reaction to that, I think it's true, you know, I think, I don't think we can kid ourselves, we can look at a map of Salem and see where higher-income areas are. And typically, people who have more steady income are going to be able to have more time to participate in civic processes, by virtue of having just one job, or being retired, or being independently wealthy, or whatever it is. And I've seen this, in my ward, I have people that tell me, "I really want to go to that meeting, but I have to work," or "I can't get there," or "My car's broken," or whatever it is. So I don't think we can just say everybody's the same, and, well, everybody has the same access to civic processes, because there's other barriers in place that we might not know about, and we should recognize those things and make, that's why our, kind of what Ms. Anderson was talking about earlier, we need to go out to people to have that engagement, because not everyone's going to be able to come down to City Hall on a Wednesday night and testify about something, so. So I appreciate that, Councillor Nagy, and I think it's, I think it's true, and we need to be, we need to recognize that, too.
Yeah, a good example, I think, too, is, we just went through this discussion about use of our parks during the eclipse, all the comment came from the Busch Park area. I didn't hear from other, yeah, none of it positive.
Still after the fact.
There, I know. But I think that that is true. I think there's also, in a lot of the neighborhoods, a tremendous tolerance. I live in Ward One, have lived in Ward Lund for 40-some years, and that has always been, we've got all the special needs homes, and group homes in our, in our neighborhood. It wasn't low-income housing, it was, it was group homes. Studies have been done, and you really find, I think, surprisingly well-dispersed use of the community in most cases. I'm always surprised, and I've seen it done over the years, so I think we ought to do it again, I agree with the whole baseline concept.
So the eclipse comment woke everybody up. Councillor Hoy, and then Councillor Lewis.
Well, I wasn't necessarily going to speak to this, but since there's been a lot of comment about the engagement of wards five and six, it's part of my ongoing conversation about the challenges that we have, especially in Ward Six. You know, the fact that we're meeting today on a Saturday precludes a lot of my neighbors from being here, because we don't have meaningful bus service. I'm very happy that that's going to be changing in the next year or so, but just the fact that we're meeting on a Saturday means that a lot of the residents, a lot of the people that I see in my neighborhood, they can't be here today, because they don't have any way to get here. And so I think it's incumbent upon the city to do a better job, it's incumbent upon us to do a better job of reaching out. I've mentioned before that I think there are two residents of Ward Six on any of the 18 boards and commissions. I mean, that's, it's all the same issue, it's the same things we're talking about here, and we, it's on us to change that dynamic. Thank you.
Councillor Lewis.
Well, two comments now. One, just wanted to remind everybody that this is live on CCTV, so you could be home having your breakfast coffee and watching this. And as far as engaging, I believe that the city is very open for folks to comment, they can comment in numerous ways, so. Everybody doesn't have a TV, everybody doesn't have a computer, everybody doesn't have a phone, but a whole bunch of people do, and they have the opportunity, if they so choose, to participate. The one comment I wanted to make about the discussion is, fortunately, all of these questions, all of these comments and suggestions about where to put who, when, they are all dealt with in the comprehensive plan review. I could tell you right now that if we made an announcement that there'll be no more multifamily in any of the neighborhoods, nobody would stand up and complain. Nobody. And I don't even know if anybody would stand up and ask, "Well, where are they going to go?"
Councillor Kaisner.
Just wanted to change, shift, shift gears a little bit. For the goal for accessible health and social services for Salem residents, there is action number two, which is maximizing resources for coordination, on and on. This is something I've actually been asked about a lot, at least in Ward One, at my neighborhood groups, and just people contacting me. They always want the city, what is the city doing about homelessness? What is the city doing about whatever? And this is just personally, I feel that we need to make sure people understand that it's not just the city's responsibility to take care of people, that it's a community-wide effort. So I think there's a misconception in the, in the community that the city's responsible for housing people who are homeless, or that's, you know, the city needs to provide that money, and that funding, and those staff, and all of that stuff, those buildings. There's a, there's a saying out there in the, in the world, I guess, it's, "Do what you do best and network the rest." And I don't necessarily think the city's a great, there's things the city does really, really well, and there's things the city doesn't do very well. So I think making sure that we have those connections, and can empower the organizations and resources already out there to continue doing that kind of work is, is really. and resources already out there to continue doing that kind of work is really good. And I think it's important that we highlight that as a city with, when we're talking to folks is, you know, the city can provide money, funding and support and all of that stuff, but it's really these places, these entities that are providing the actual work on the ground. So I think there's a big misconception that there's absolutely nothing out there, and all they see is homeless and people who don't have access to all of these services. And they think that, well, what is the city doing about that? So I'm glad that's in there. Make a point of it.
I think you're making a good point, Counselor. And a lot of it is the work that we do, talking to neighborhood groups and making sure you're familiar with how the city operates, the amount of funding we put into the networking portion, actually how important our social services budget has been to having a whole, actually a fairly rich host of private nonprofits and public nonprofits that rely on us for a variety of social service programs. We're in fact, one of the few cities that actually puts general fund money into social services. That's a fairly unusual decision that was made by counselors years and years ago. We ought to be proud of the work we're doing. I think a lot of it is each of us need to be very familiar with what the city does do and who the city does help fund here. It'll help. It helps explain social services in Salem, I think, fairly well.
Clearly, this is a goal area that you all care about passionately. But my job is to move us forward. The next goal area is critical infrastructure. Counselor Nagy.
Thank you. And we haven't met since our last work session on this, so the information is still the same as what we saw previously. Infrastructure as a whole, we have a lot of it, and it's worth a lot of money, and it behooves us to take care of that. It's funded in different ways. Most of the projects we see are because they have a dedicated funding source, the majority of them, again, in the water sewer utility. So a lot of the infrastructure projects aren't pretty and have been foregone in the past. We actually had that issue even with the utility for a while, where people pushed off upgrades that were necessary for financial relief rather than taking care of them. And we've essentially rectified that and are on a good path. We need to be on a good path for the balance of our infrastructure. With that, knowing what we have for maintenance out there so we can actually do prioritization, looking at setting aside some monies for maintenance inside of the budget process because we tend to spend it all or spend it somewhere else in the way the budget goes, like, well, which list will take this money and put it over here? And again, since a lot of the infrastructure isn't pretty and people can't see the level of degradation sometimes, even in streets, you'd say, oh, that street looks fine. You get public works people out there with you and walk down that street, and it's like, uh, no, this one's just about ready to fail. And we used to have at the budget season, our general affairs person come in and bring in the wall of shame on things that had failed over the last year. So we need to actually look at how we take care of our stuff, how we adequately, or at least fund it to some level, because a lot of it has really no funding at all. And then we actually, as the third proposed action on that, as far as general obligation bonding strategy, we're already well underway on identifying over a long term what those bonding needs are, and then we'll be ready to bring that out to council and the public for prioritization and participation.
Critical infrastructures are very important, but not always the most exciting thing to talk about, partly because it's challenging.
And the proposed goal statement, we went round on that last time, too, but it comes down to really what actions we're going to do to take care of that. I think we got into what streamlining means, like, should we have one master plan rather than fourteen? It's making the system easier for us to actually look at because we could stack up our master plans and look like the Affordable Care Act.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Following up on Counselor Nagy's comments, a little bit of a background here. I am the chair of the committee that is now looking into SDC, System Development Charges, and we are in at least our third and maybe our fourth meeting, and we are still on the information phase so we can understand it. And it's, but one thing I do understand now is that built into our utilities fees is money that will be set aside for maintenance. And that's into your water bill and the bills that we're paying. But it's not built into the transportation facilities and the road facilities. And, you know, SDC funds, it's too complicated to get into, but what those are, we want to get out of here by five thirty today. But they're only aimed at initial construction of things. And once that, so on sewers, it's okay because you've got built in, as part of each fee, each fee that we all pay monthly, there's built in something for maintenance over the time. So twenty years from now, when that sewer fails, we will have the money to maintain it. But there's nothing like that built into the transportation system, the streets and roads and bridges and everything else. So yes, SDCs can pay it to begin with, but then we're stuck with all these infrastructure developments that we don't have any way built into the budget to pay for. So Counselor Nagy is right. That's not a very exciting thing to say, we're going to build into the budget, set aside monies for road construction, et cetera. You know, oftentimes, we just go out and let's do a bond measure. Well, a bond measure isn't going to cover everything. So we need to be aware of that as we're looking at our critical infrastructure as to how we're going to deal with maintaining it in the future years.
Mayor Bennett and then Counselor Nagy.
One of the questions I'd have is, did you include a look at parks as part of the critical infrastructure?
Yes, and parks are part of the SDCs, too. And I should have added parks because it's parks, there's five different SDC funds, and three of them, I'm looking at Director Fernandez, three of them are, the maintenance is covered by, in the fee structure, but two of them, parks and transportation, maintenance, there's nothing in there. And that's partly why we buy land for parks, and then what do we do with it? And that's an issue on the SDC committee as, you know, why are developers paying and builders paying SDC funds for parks that we don't, we don't maintain in the neighborhood? So all those things are things that need to be looked at.
Yeah, and my question, really, I understand the SDC issue fairly well, but it's the, it's the maintenance issue, and that's what I think this is about, I think. And it's the, it really is parks and streets, not just streets, not just sidewalks, but parks.
No, I agree. I agree, Mr. Mayor. I should have mentioned parks.
I'm a little concerned that those three are not listed, actually called out, particularly sidewalks. I think we all understand streets. I think sidewalks have gotten short shrift here, or are they called out? And I just missed it.
Yeah, if I can, and then I'll. Inside of the council packet piece of it, it's like infrastructure in Salem generally includes, and there's others besides that, buildings, street impertinences, which would give us our sidewalk fees, pipes, dams, properties, parking garages, recreation facilities, runways, taxiways, equipment, and trees as well, since.
Great.
We have a living infrastructure. So that being said, and hidden SDC-type things as well, you know, we've tried to deal with parks from a bonding strategy, and we've failed with the electorate on that to a large extent, but, and when you collect SDCs, you have developers screaming, well, you're just banking all that because it's meant for, you know, growth-related type things to spend it, and we don't have any matching to do that. So I don't think we even collect up to maximum on transportation because of that specifically, because we have no funding source with which to come in from our side. We've attempted that in the past with something that was somewhat related with the water sewer franchise fees, but then the general fund gets in trouble, and we shifted all that back. We were working towards adequate, and now we're going the other way again. So we, we can't bind a future council, and that's what we saw with that. So how one deals with trying to put a set aside in to deal with infrastructure and then maintain it is very difficult because there will be some need, and does that need take priority when you look at the long-term replacement cost? And what the heck do you do when this thing over here fails? And what's the cost of it versus a short-time, pretty project?
I hope that was the sustainability discussion as well. These are the kinds of issues. It's not, or how are we going to pay for cops so often, so much as how are we going to take care of this huge community investment and meet expectations for parks and sidewalks and transit pullouts and all the other bits and pieces that go into the city, and those seem to be the missing elements.
Because with like the water sewer fund, we're slowly working towards, and what's the replacement life of the asset? And we're trying to get there as a hundred-year replacement in the capital funding for the utilities, but we have really nothing for parks or streets, and then we still have the rest of the general fund, non-infrastructure, but more personnel-related that we have to deal with as well.
Counselor Anderson.
I would like to suggest that we do not adopt as a goal, moving toward adequate. City of Salem, moving toward adequate.
Well, I hope we'll move toward sustainability, and that would be, at this point, better than what we're doing. So hopefully, that will become the policy and that we won't let these issues get lost in the discussion of all these other kind of sexier and easier issues to talk about that are philosophical, and the real nuts and bolts of running a city gets ignored. And I worry a lot about that in strategic planning because it's so easy to talk about the fun stuff, so hard to talk about the money. So I hope we all get real serious about the money during the strategic planning adoption.
You're up, please.
Just a comment, I am representing Ward eight. I am a firm believer of keeping up what you have. It really is true. Pay me now, pay me later. I mean, it's common sense. But under the heading of critical infrastructure, the goal says for the development, development and maintenance of a robust infrastructure system, that has to mean new infrastructure. It can't be just what we have now. If we do that and focus all of our attention on just fixing what we have now, we will fail to prepare to serve the people that we have now, as well as those that will come in the future.
Look at your transit system and see how that works.
All kinds of things.
Drive through Portland, see how that.
Transit, walking, bicycle trails, streets, bridges, it's all part of the package.
But it's not fun, is it? This park.
It's not cheap.
Not cheap.
Sewers are fun.
Counselor Kaiser.
Sewers are good. We love sewers. Everybody loves sewers because nobody does not want to have one. So I think, I think the actions, I was on this critical infrastructure group also, and I think these actions were really targeted at that one-to-two-year timeframe that I think most of these are, we're trying to target. And the first one, I think, was really important because it's actually got two components to it. The first is actually taking an assessment of those conditions and creating that baseline, which we've talked a lot about with these other goals. What's, what are we doing now? What do we have now? Because we don't have a great grasp on that comprehensively. And the second was, now that we know what we have, what are we going to do about it? And how are we going to make that a fair process to assess what we're going to do with it? And then once we have that, how are we going to pay for it and the bonding strategy? So, you know, to Counselor Lewis's point, yeah, we have to, we have to look to the future as well. And I think in this short-term, one-to-two-year period, the focus is on how do we maintain those things we already have? And then I think that bonding strategy comes in. Okay, when we identify what we have, what we need to do with it, how we're going to pay for it, maybe we need to do a bond. So I think it actually all fits together. I don't think it precludes anything new from happening, but, but it does make sure that we have a fair and kind of clear process going forward for how to evaluate what we need.
So just in terms of a process, and Steve, feel free to weigh in if you want. This is a strategic plan, so we're trying to think a little longer than just the one-year or two-year horizon, maybe more like a five-year horizon. And then there'll be an annual work plan update process that will sort of address what's priority. And we have an exercise coming up later this morning to talk about amongst all of these things, which ones are the most urgent for the sort of first-year transition plan. So that's the thinking, we should be thinking a little longer term than just sort of the annual work plan. Steve, do you want to touch on?
Well said. That's right.
Counselor Nagy.
Yeah, and in that same light, the first year or two is going to take us to get that prioritization system in place for most of the areas that we're talking about.
Exactly right. Okay, so moving forward from critical infrastructure, that you all agree is critically important. Public transportation is next on the list. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you. So this is, this work group is really a kind of a tale of two work groups because it was sort of pre-transportation package, and the conversation was really focused on how are we going to develop and an ability to enhance our service for weekends and evenings? And then after the transportation package was passed, we really sort of shifted focus away from that since that problem suddenly was solved in the middle of our, in the middle of our work by the legislature. Or actually, I think the committee is going to take full credit for that. So this group consisted of, we had a, we had great staff support, and we had members from the chariots, there were staff from the chariots as well, so we worked through the issues. And it's sort of an interesting process, sort of framing this work because, you know, we don't run the bus service. So we tried to really focus on ways that we could, could support a robust transportation service in Salem. And so we really focused on things that we can do because obviously the buses need our streets and infrastructure in order to operate. So our first, our goal was a public transportation system that meets community needs. And we came up with some really specific action items. And one was, we've sort of quickly recognized that we needed to update the intergovernmental agreement between the city and chariots. It had been, it's been quite outdated, sort of sitting on the shelf for quite some time, and there's some very specific things that needed to be done to get that moving. And we also wanted to establish a transit committee, which the mayor did, and we're looking forward to that committee getting moving and sort of taking over a lot of the, a lot of the things that we discussed and moving them forward. And then we also talked about amending development regulations in order to streamline the way that maybe bus stops and transit stops and associated amenities, pedestrian access to and from destination, sidewalk construction, all that sort of thing, to streamline that process.
Counselor Anderson.
We've been talking a lot about sidewalks in many of our areas of discussion here, and I am sure that you've thought about this, but there ought to be some way where when chariots needs a bus stop at a certain route and there's not a sidewalks, we ought to be able to coordinate with chariots to, maybe that might be the time we're putting in sidewalks there at that particular point so we can, people can get to the bus stops easier and more safely.
Well, we didn't, I don't think we got quite into when we would, I would maybe defer to some of my other counselors to remind you, but we didn't talk about actual installation of sidewalks as it relates to bus stops, but we did talk about the coordination of where they, where they go and, and making, we sort of had a lot of emphasis to make certain that the transit system was committed to a stop before we, before we put a lot of money towards the infrastructure, because when they, when they get moved after we've put in a lot of effort, and I see Ms. Warren key coming up perhaps to maybe speak to this? Thought I saw you out of the corner of my eye. She was our excellent support person. But there was a lot of discussion about, about how that worked and having a commitment, but also recognizing the need, or the fact that sometimes transit, transit stops need to move. So. Is there more you wanted to say to that?
Not really.
If I can, real quick, and that just shows kind of the interactions between all of these. these strategic plan elements, where you're talking about infrastructure, transit, and housing, and bonding strategies as well. So, they have to have enough of a robust system that, when we identify a need, we have the funding available to actually satisfy two needs at once a lot of times.
That's exactly right. And we really focused on the transit aspect of that, and didn't focus a lot on the funding, because we knew that there were other work groups on, you know, we didn't see that as part of our purview.
Yeah, we know we have some serious issues with transit right now, and they should actually take priority over, you know, a sidewalk right now, just actually getting service, which it looks like, you know, is moving forward as well. So, real good outlook on that in the long run.
Definitely. And I think that, I mean, one of the things I didn't mention was, about this work group, was I think a lot of it is relational, because it's talking about two, or three, or four government entities coming together. And specifically with the city and transit, this work group, I think, took us a long way to get that relationship, a really robust working relationship established. And I actually felt very good about that part of it, which you don't see up here on the PowerPoint, and is part of one of the outcomes, but it really was one of the meaningful outcomes, was a robust conversation with transit. And I see that continuing.
Great. Counselor Anderson, and then Counselor Lewis. Oh, all right, Counselor Lewis.
I just had a short comment. I was a member of that critical infrastructure committee, and the thing I always remember the most is the smile on Alan Pollak's face when he was on the committee, after hearing the passage of the transportation bill. But then, we quickly turned to, it's more than just the money, it's the planning, it's the cooperation. And I think we're on the right road here.
Counselor Anderson.
Having served for parts of two terms on the Lane Transit District in Lane County, I can agree with all that, and the cooperation is extremely important, and I think this is a good way to start it. We talked about sidewalks being interrelated to everything else, and infrastructure and streets. I think affordable housing also fits into this. The council will recall, I don't know, three or four months ago, we approved, I don't know, some help the city was giving to an affordable housing out on Corden Road, way out southeast, and part of the concern was, there's no bus service out there. And it was a mile and a half, I think, to the nearest bus stop. And hopefully, that this kind of coordination with the city staff, and transit district staff, and city elected officials, and transit district elected officials, will address situations like that, where we're approving building houses for people who would oftentimes use the bus, but there's no bus that goes out there.
Other, Counselor Nanki.
And just to show that I think that system is functioning well, I think all the council actually received a meeting notice on this Salem Mary Mass Transit District meeting, and I think it's just their normal meeting, which we've never got noticed of before, so communication is improving across the lines.
Sounds like this process is already producing good results. So, that's an exciting, satisfying outcome of the strategic planning. Okay, the last substance area, the goal area is the one that was added during the process, and since your last meeting, was a focus on environmental action. Counselor Kaiser, do you want to introduce that one?
Yeah, thanks. So, the environmental action work group, we met, it was a little over a week ago. We had, I felt like we had a very good discussion. We had a, I think it was probably the largest work group I was part of, it had certainly the most number of public comments and people participating in it. We also had representatives there from PGE, and Northwest Natural Gas, some architects. So, it was pretty interesting. Our conversation was good. The goal that we kind of settled on there was what you have in your packet here, so prepare a community-wide environmental strategy that prioritizes reductions of greenhouse gas emissions. Kristin Rutherford led the group, and she asked for comments about that, to make sure we were all on the, kind of the same page from what we discussed. And there were a couple of comments that came back from people who are on that work group. Two of the comments said we should change that goal, just, or tack on to the end of that goal, by means of a climate action plan for Salem. And nobody disagreed with that. And then, there was another comment from another personal work group, that said they were concerned about using the word prioritizes in the goal. So, I guess this group is a little odd in the strategic planning, just because we didn't settle on the goal like we did in the last work session we had for this. So, I guess we're going to probably talk about the goal, as well as the actions. In short, Salem's actually, we've done a lot. I think, you know, the public comment we had earlier, Salem has done some things. We have some plans out there already. We have an energy strategy, there's a, I can't remember them off the top of my head now, but there has been work done on this. I think where this work group fits in is, this is focusing specifically on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And that's where we tried to land as a group, recognizing that the city's already doing things in terms of like, clean water, and streams, and all of that kind of stuff, and also city-owned properties, making environmental improvements to those. But it's really focused on a community-wide reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, by means of a climate action plan. And that's the scope of the group. And so, the actions are based on that goal, which you listed up there, and I won't read them off.
So, as Counselor Kaiser noted, this one's slightly different than the other ones, because you didn't debate the nature of the goal in your last work session, and some of this, so some of this information is newer than in the other ones. So, that's appropriate, that we should review both the goal statement of preparing a community-wide environmental strategy that prioritizes reductions of greenhouse gas emissions, with a possible amendment, as noted. So, open this up for discussion, Counselor Anderson, and then Counselor Nanki.
I was on that committee too, along with Counselor Nanki and Counselor McCoy. And I also would say that, at the table was a representative of 350 organization, because we valued their input. They weren't just in the audience, making audience comments. And being a deadline-driven attorney, I was pushing us to, "Let's get this done, by the time we have the next meeting." And the other people on the committee, counselors and others, rightly put a break on that, and said, "We need to spend as long a time as we can to come up with an appropriate plan. If that means we're not ready, we're not ready." And this shows one of those situations, because there is some not-full agreement on the wording. In expansion of what Counselor Kaiser says, the staff was very good at saying, "Here are the things that the city is already doing," in four or five areas that have been mentioned here. You know, solid waste, water, fuel reduction, air quality, that sort of stuff. So, I think what we were really looking at is, we need to add a fifth area, or a sixth area, whatever it is, of a climate action plan. And so, whether that is in the name of the actual goal, or where it is, whether it is in one of the bullets, that these are what we will do. And so, the bullets might be, continue the city's efforts in, you know, solid waste and other things, and add a climate action plan, starting with, first one is a greenhouse gas inventory, and moving from there. Again, we're back to the baseline that we talked about in the housing issue, and other issues. What do we have, and where is it? In order to do any kind of effective climate action plan, like almost every major city in this state has already done, you know, we need to get, develop the baseline.
Counselor Nanki.
Thanks. And I did not get a chance to comment on the email sent out by Kristin earlier in the week, kind of took a lightning strike to life this week. And so, still trying to come out of shock from lightning. That being, and I thought at the meeting, I'd asked several times, in regards to the goal statement, where it ends, reductions of greenhouse gas emissions, and then I could have swore, because I asked multiple times, it was, "And," all those current things that we're doing now, which are not included in that, because the strategic plan will drive budgetary decisions, and if those aren't in this, that basically says, "We're not going to do anything about all those other things." And our meeting next Monday, we have a great project coming in, where we're getting $3 million to put in a new cogeneration generator out at Willow Lake. But, we still have more meetings on this. Because then, in proposed actions, some of those could be considered overall environmental actions, and some are more specific to just the greenhouse gas piece. And so, we still need to have more discussion on that.
So, Steve, you want to help me with process here? It's September 9th, and you're scheduled for council adopting of this strategic plan in October. And I'm hearing people say, "This isn't quite cooked, and there needs to be some more work on it." And that implies some process step that's not in my outline at the moment. How do you want to handle this?
Well, I think this is a great example of where the strategic plan will be a
A living.
A living document. Sorry for the cliche, but it's going to be an ongoing process. And I think it's certainly better to recognize that this goal and the actions are still a work in progress, than trying to fit this goal and these actions into our overall format and lexicon for the overall strategic plan. So, in other words, kind of like footnote, if we need to, that this is still being baked, that we don't have specificity yet on the goal. And as the work group said, "Take as much time as necessary to get it right."
So, what I heard there is, we adopt this either exactly as it is, or with amendment that might refer to a climate action plan, and/or an amendment that might refer to the existing activities. And then, we put a footnote on this and say, you know, detailed actions in progress.
Stay tuned.
Thoughts? Nanki, and then Kaiser.
And, you know, from a budgetary perspective, I think the entire committee agreed, as far as, nothing gets done if it's not measured. And so, there's certain elements of emissions across the spectrum, specifically the greenhouse gas one, which shouldn't be that difficult. It'll take some time and some funding. There's other pieces through the utility as well, that are, you know, in progress. So, I think from a, if this is driving budget, we kind of know where some of the budget priorities are already going to be. So, I'm not concerned that, and again, to get back to Counselor Anderson's point, you don't want to just slam an element into the strategic plan, because that'll end up, we had a lot of discussion on the fact that, well, we had all these great things, you know, eight, 10 years ago, and we haven't gotten any updates. It's not a robust system that keeps moving forward, and relooking, and reprioritizing what projects are out there, and where you get the most bang for your environmental block.
Counselor Kaiser.
Yeah, I think, you know, by virtue of this just happening later in the process, you know, we have to give it time. And actually, at that group, we were cautioned by a couple of people that have kind of done this work in other cities and communities, that you can't just rush it. It's actually something that takes some time. So, I think if we adopt, like, we're going to have a goal for environmental action, and that goal will be coming forth, most likely, in the next few weeks. I don't think that's going to throw us off at all.
So, I guess a question I would ask is, what you've got says now, is, "Prepare a community-wide environmental strategy." Says, you mean, basically says, you've got to prepare the strategy, it isn't prepared yet. So, maybe that's adequate as stated. Counselor Anderson?
Well, I think it moves toward adequate, but, our new city motto, "We are moving toward adequate here." But, you know, I would propose that, you know, we've got six goals here, and it seems to me that we ought to have a seventh goal, and I just, you know, again, at the, with the danger of wordsmithing and writing on the fly, but I just wrote, "Adopt a climate action plan with emphasis on reduction of greenhouse gas emissions." I mean, because that's what we're talking about, and it's not specifically said. And I think much of the concern that was expressed in the emails after, I was the one who suggested climate action plan being the goal. And I'm not so much concerned that it is in that goal, but it at least ought to be one of the bullet points underneath it, because the goals are supposed to be more general.
So, what I'm hearing, the proposal there would be to shorten the goal, to say, "Prepare a community-wide environmental strategy," period, and then add an action that says, "Develop a climate action plan that prioritizes reductions in greenhouse gas emissions."
Sure, sure.
How do others feel about that? I see nodding heads, or complete stony nonreaction.
I think that might get at, maybe, you know, what Counselor Nanki says, is, "We don't want to exclude all the stuff the city's been doing already." You know, and that's not what that work group was trying to say at all, was, it was trying to say, "This is in addition to all of those other things." So, having something that's a bit more generic, I think would be okay.
Counselor Nanki.
And that being said, as far as in proposed actions, we don't really have a greenhouse gas element inside of the system right now, where
Yes.
We have some of the other pieces, but not adequate, in my opinion. We don't want to add a line item under proposed actions for every one of our environmental footprint, interaction aspects. But, yeah, we should talk about that one at the next meeting as well.
Okay.
On how we deal with the actual actions, because we need to, again, make them short, something that's doable in the next couple of years, and it might actually be adding in that measurement, which isn't really in the proposed actions, which I think everyone agreed on, it was in one of the other documents, but it's not listed on the screen right now.
Counselor Lewis, and then Counselor Anderson.
Just a quick comment. I don't have any issue truly with the environmental plan, or a climate action plan, or a plan at all. My concern is, these plans generally don't tell or talk about reality. For example, it's great to have the baseline. I agree with that. And if we don't have it, we should have it. We've got to know where we are before we know where we're going to go. And I don't have any problem setting up goals. I would assume that those would be to reduce greenhouse gas, so no problem there either. But down the road, when we haven't reached those goals, but yet we've moved towards them, do we implement enforcement procedures? Do we let people off the hook and extend the deadlines? And the plan never talks about that. And it sets up the situation that we have and will have, that there will be those that say, "We're not moving fast enough. The goal is right there, clearly in front of us. Why aren't we there? We need to implement to get there." Others will argue, "We're doing better. We're moving in the right direction, but maybe not fast enough." And the argument will never end, because the plan doesn't address the issue.
And how would, I think, I'm guessing, most folks in the room would agree that that was an accurate statement. How would you adjust to accommodate that kind of predictive, good prediction of what might well happen?
If you're asking me, you make crystal clear that these are goals and aspirations, and as long as we're moving in the direction to get there, there's no need to implement anything that could cause pain to people, so we can get there quicker.
Counselor Nanki.
And I spoke about this to the group as well, so I mean, in a true environmental management system, as you look at your footprint, and your aspects, and your impacts, then you develop objectives and targets. I personally set stretch targets, but when you look at those, you actually have to have a series of questions to ask. Is technology available to actually do something about that? Is it economically viable? And there's a full series that I go through. Are there projects that would allow me to do that? If no, leave it alone. If yes, move it on to my objectives and target list. And so, from that perspective, and looking at, you know, some of the other elements, reducing greenhouse gas reducing greenhouse gas a lot of times means reducing electric or energy consumption. And how one does that, I mean, for water, we distributed the bags people could stick in their toilet tanks and low-flow showerheads, which affects the entire spectrum, regardless of income levels as well. So how do we do something similar with energy down the road, whether or not, you know, is the money best spent with us doing something or helping drive technology changes? Because that's where it's going to have to end up. You know, there's a lot of concern about fossil fuels. Well, we're, we're working on the alternatives right now. They're not necessarily economically viable sometimes, but it's a stepping stone. If you look at compact fluorescence, you know, everybody was big on that. I hated the idea. And I think we will see large-scale mercury bump across the planet because of that. You know, now everybody's shifted over to LEDs because they're even more energy conservative. So you have to look at that whole spectrum, and that's what a full system does. And you look across the different aspects, and where can I get the best bang for my buck? It might be solid waste this year and water next year, and energy reduction mixed in all the way through, or separate as well.
Councilor Anderson, and then Councilor Boye.
I'm really, I won't make my comment, because I was going to do some more wordsmithing. And it's clear we're going to have another, another meeting of the Environmental Action Group, and I've got some other suggestions for the proposed goal. But I do think it's important that we acknowledge that the climate action plan is part of our proposed actions. How we play around with the goal is a thing that the committee work ought to be done, as opposed to the work of a committee as a whole that we are here today.
At the moment, it feels like there's support for shortening the goal, adding the statement about the climate action plan, and acknowledging that there's more work to be done. Councilor Boye.
I was going to say something along the lines of what Councilor Anderson just said. I was going to suggest that it seems like we're acting as a work group here. We have a work group on this topic. We really need to send this back to them, let them finish their work and come back to us. Seems like they're maybe one meeting away from having a good goal. So if we could ask them to do that, come back before the next council meeting, we could have the opportunity to discuss this one goal prior to adoption. I don't think that's a, that's an unreasonable task. They could finish their work, have the robust discussion that needs to occur, and then we could adopt the whole plan.
Steve?
If I can add just one piece onto that. And, you know, all the other work groups, we've had one meeting, so you kind of know what everyone was doing. And I think the discussion here was, was just to let council know what's happening at that work group, since it's new, and we haven't had really no discussion as a, as a body on it.
So I'm hearing nodding heads and Steve acknowledging there'll be a way to figure that out, that the direction we have right now is we want to let the work group have another meeting and bring back a slightly refined proposal for this goal and set of actions in comparison to what we have today.
Yes.
And we heard the notion that a climate action plan probably should be an action as opposed to part of the goal. It can be simplified, the goal is direction. And Councilor Lewis, everybody heard Councilor Lewis's caution that we be realistic about the consequences of what we're doing and what we're, what we're setting up going forward, which I think, I think that was well said, and the work group should take that into consideration as they're working. Pretty much positive body language at the moment. So I'm going to take that to heart.
Brian, if I may, we do have a community open house coming up September 19th.
Courtney?
And we're also going to do a, not a controlled survey, but provide an opportunity for the public to provide comment electronically. So if it would be, it would be helpful if, at least a consensus, we can still certainly leave draft on whatever is shared publicly between now and when council has an opportunity to hear back from the work group. But if we could at least capture the consensus of changing the draft goal, still a draft, a draft goal to prepare.
Let me, let me restate where I think, I'm with you on that. So for purposes of the community open house that's coming up in a couple of weeks, the input, is we're going to make the following edits. We're going to, the goal will be prepare a community-wide environmental strategy.
Period.
Period. And an action will be added that says, develop a climate action plan that prioritizes reductions of greenhouse gas emissions. And an asterisk will be added to that, saying the work group's going to meet again, and the council will review it again before the strategic plan is adopted.
Yeah.
Everybody's nodding their head, so I'm going to, I'm going to take that as consensus. So, very good. We're a little bit ahead of schedule, and the mayor is not in the room, so I'm going to make a facilitator's decision and suggest we take a 10-minute break before we do the prioritization exercise. So according to my sources, it is, what time is it? It's 11:00. Let's get back together at 11:10. My apologies for letting you all have time to get warmed up on the break. So between here and the end of this meeting, which is in about half an hour, I wanted to do an exercise and cause a discussion about priorities. And in doing that, we get into a little bit of an area that can be confusing, and that's, we've had, just had a little caucusing trying to straighten, is when is it the strategic plan, and when is it the implementation priority budgeting session? So we're going to, it's, that's going to be a little bit ambiguous for the next bit, because we want to, we want to cause you to talk a little bit about priorities and urgency and what comes first. And at some level, not all of that will get adopted into the strategic plan, because the strategic plan's kind of higher level, but it helps drive the next year's budget cycle and sort of what's happening there. So I think your input is really good, and the energy you're all showing and focusing on this is just fabulous, and we want to keep encouraging that. And we, and then we have, we have sort of a couple of logistical issues related to getting to the finish line on the strategic plan, that I just want to say out loud what, what I heard just happened, and what the schedule is, and put it out there, and it's going to be up to the folks that implement it to be there. We have the strategic plan scheduled for adoption at your second meeting in October. And we've been working on this for a long time, and I think everybody's ready to be done with this process. I heard you just now say you want the environment group to meet again and give you some refinements before you adopt the strategic plan. If both of those things I just said are true, that means they have to do that in that timeframe, and to get it realistically into your second meeting in October timeframe, that means that group needs to get together and get their work done by the end of September. Today is September 9th.
What are you?
That, well, I'm just, I'm just, when you get into all of those people and trying to get them scheduled, I'm just saying, those are the realities. Steve is okay with finishing the strategic plan with a, with a caveat noted in it, that this is a work in progress. But if you want it, you know, if you want it to be informed by a further meeting of the work group, they've got to do their work by the end of September. And there's the schedule. Councilor Lewis?
So when would the work product be introduced to the full council? At that second meeting in October or before?
Oh, I could speak to that, Brian. Certainly, we would follow our existing practice of getting it to you as part of the agenda the Wednesday or Thursday prior. Certainly, though, with something as substantive as the strategic plan, we would aim to get it out earlier. However, with what Brian just said, as far as the environmental action work group, that could, that could impact when we would have a strategic plan to you for your review prior to the October meeting.
Councilor Anderson.
Well, if we meet by the end of September and come to some conclusions and recommendations, I would say that we could have the report to the council in two or three days after, after the meeting. And I would say we should get it to them as soon as we can. And I'm looking at Director Rutherford over there. You know, I mean, she'll have to crystallize and send something to us, but really, this isn't going to be a huge thing.
Well, why don't you do it by the 19th so you can give it to the public during their open house?
If we could do that.
Well, no, you just have to do it.
Yeah, well, I'm ready to do it, I'm ready to do it this afternoon, but we got to call on, we got to make sure everybody can meet as early as possible.
Well, I'd really suggest the 19th. To move ahead with the environmental action plan without some level of public comment would be.
Yeah. Well, I think we can meet by then, because based on the first meeting we had, it was called quite quickly, and people came together.
I think you, you may have been gone, Mr. Mayor, when we talked about it, but, but we did adopt, or not, we adopted a draft goal and actions for, for the, for the open house. Yes, so we do have that.
No, no, I want the final product by, for, this is, or this is good enough, one or the other.
That's what we talked about.
Is this good enough?
For the open house.
No, is this good enough for the public to comment?
The agreement, the agreement just before the break was, we made an edit to the, what was presented, and said that was good enough for public input for the 19th. But the council asked that the work group meet again between now and the finish of the strategic plan, so they could evolve their language.
But if we can meet before the 19th, even better.
Yeah, yeah, let's see the final product. See what you wanted.
It'd be closer.
So just, those, we'll, we'll be preparing the materials for the 19th meeting, you know, before the 19th. So, so, you know, the time, time's a-wastin'. We certainly, if we have the final, whatever input we have from the work group by September 30th, we can get into your information packets and advance your adoption of the strategic plan. We'll have time for that. I'm just about to ask you to do an exercise that involves dreaded dots. In negotiating with Councilor Nanki about that during the break.
He's incredibly anti-dot.
He made an articulate point that having council members have an opportunity to, with a little more time, to do some sort of forced comparisons between things, to think that that was also useful and maybe more telling. And just negotiating that, here's, here's, here's our proposal, is we're going to do this dot exercise now, and, and then we are going to have some community input, and we're going to have whatever we have from the environmental work group. And at that point.
We will redot.
At that point, the manager is going to make a recommended final language for the plan to you, and give you an opportunity at home, on your own, in direct, sort of, now we get into public meeting rules here, we will send you a survey that we're asking you to fill out that, that ranks these things. You have to send it back to the city staff, and then you have to see the results of that together in a public meeting. We can't have sort of, so, so we will, so we'll do both, and it seems to us the most logical time to do that second exercise is after we get this, these, this other input. So it's like your last time to all kind of give some input before you're looking at the final plan as a draft recommendation from Steve. Does that sound right? Councilor Nanki?
If I can just comment on that, several of these things will have no dots when we leave today. Steve will have no idea how important they are or not to us, which is where that forced ranking actually will give him the ability, if there's some money, that's like, which one of these is more important to the council? I'll, I'll suggest funding that one versus this one based on that forced ranking, because today, when I stick my dots up there and I want clarification from, from both of you right now, geo-bonding strategy, we're doing that. Transit Committee, we're doing that. Do you want us to put a dot on that if we think it's important? Because a lot of people will say, we're already doing that, I'm going to stick my dot somewhere else, which basically messes with its prioritization level.
That's, that's a fair point. And so, and it reinforces the reason we want to do this secondary exercise. So, so we're going to do that. I also, as I mentioned at the very beginning of this little spiel, we're getting into the area of when is it the strategic plan, and when is it the, the implementation and operational, a bunch of this, what comes first and when are we going to do it, is really the operationalizing after it's done. But this is a great opportunity to capture all of your attention when you're focused on this, to, to give input both into the implementation as well as the current strategic plan. So, let's do this exercise, and then we can all talk about what it means. I just, before you stand up, though, and just assume that you understand what my slide means, Councilor Anderson.
I'm really sorry, but could we put down climate action plan under environmental action? It is? Oh, okay, good. I was reading, I thought it might be at the bottom, I saw equity, and I, thank you.
I, you know, I read your mind and put it at the top.
Well, and to answer, and to answer Councilor Nanki's question, I would ask that even if it's an initiative, an effort underway, that you still use your dot if you believe that initiative, that effort is, is best idea, most urgent.
Councilor Boye.
Can you clarify what we're supposed to do with the red dots?
Well, I was just about to give you the instructions. You're responding to the instructions before I've said them. So you have three colors of dots. You have eight green dots, you have one big gold dot, and you have two red dots. So the green dots, you've got the most of those, and this would be the place of, and you're scoring the actions here, we're not scoring the overall goal areas, but scoring the individual actions, the things that I put these little, little chevrons there. So for these, this would be the things that are the most urgent. What needs to get, what, what needs to happen first, you know, sort of first year, you know, kind of the most pressing thing that we need to get to, you have a bunch of these. And as Steve just said, you should include things that you think are going to happen anyway, because we really are trying to, you know, give clear direction. So those things that are fundamental, you really should, you know, do those. The gold dot is for the, just the single best idea. What's the, what's the best thing that's up here? What's the most critical, just something that you want to say, man, if we don't get that done, you know, or what a great opportunity. This is just for the single piece, you get one of those. And then the red dots, you know, you're all, we're all talking about all of this stuff, and it's really, somebody puts something up there, and you don't want to criticize them in public, or, or you're nervous about some, this is just a place to, you don't have to use these if you don't want to. But if there's stuff up here that gives you pause, if you're, if, if you, you know, if you think it's a dumb idea, that'd be one thing. But if it just, you're nervous about it, you think it's going to be trouble, feel free to place a red dot by one or two of those things. Like I said, you don't have to use them if you're, if you think it's all gung ho. So most urgent are the green dots, the single best idea is the gold dot, and something that gives you caution or pause is the red dot. Don't worry about this too hard. Let's do this kind of quickly. We'll see what it looks like, then we'll have a conversation and see how we'd interpret it. Councilor Kizer.
Just for clarification again, because I'm not clear. You want us, so the Transit Committee, we're doing and are in process of doing, you still want us to put a dot on that?
Yes.
Is that correct?
If it, yeah, if it, if it needs to happen right away. Okay? Go for it.
Come on, Chris.
Yep.
I'm just looking.
Go back.
Watch.
Ooh, that yellow dot.
Correctly.
One of my favorites.
Stick up here.
(laughter)
I got a whole other set of dots.
Sweet!
Do you need a portable?
(laughter)
I have nine.
I have nine.
Oh, you have to be working.
Yeah.
All right.
What do you have?
I got two.
I got one.
And it's repositioned.
Yeah.
I put the red out there for it.
And this is the geo-bonding.
(inaudible).
It's not just the geo-bonding, because that's the main thing.
And this is what the question.
You barb with the hole or?
Well, these are called distrust, and I don't normally barb with the hole, and it didn't start this way, but it descended this way, so.
You should have been a kid.
I was a kid when I was made.
Not when I was a kid, you weren't.
My mom, we weren't allowed to wear stuff with holes in it, we always needed to look a certain way, but this was not my choice, I started.
You can get blue glasses.
Yeah. Yeah, those are fantastic. No, I made on my own formal dress.
Really?
Actually, that's worked very well.
I feel you.
Maybe go around.
A few times.
It drives the rest of the system.
Yeah, yeah, you said if I read this correctly.
I should get that.
Oh geez, now I can't remember whether I put a green on, the one that I put a green on already.
When somebody just sticks a red on downtown.
Yeah.
Make some decisions.
Let's get this wrapped up.
That doesn't end, I can take the, everything doesn't, we always take honey back away from it once we stick it there.
There we go.
Yeah, well, you're there.
Say the red dot.
Yeah.
Exactly. About where it counts.
Everybody's looking at you, Counselor Anderson.
Yes, I know, that's good. I like being.
Really? We hadn't noticed. I did not know that about you.
They'll be a type of t-shirts, they'll be a type of t-shirt.
They're representing.
Official believe.
Oh geez, now I can't remember whether I put a green on, the one that I put a green on already.
When somebody just sticks a red on downtown.
Yeah.
Make some decisions.
Let's get this wrapped up.
That doesn't end, I can take the, everything doesn't, we always take honey back away from it once we stick it there.
There we go.
Yeah, well, you're there.
Say the red dot.
Yeah.
Exactly.
About where it counts.
Everybody's looking at you, Counselor Anderson.
Yes, I know, that's good. I like being.
Really? We hadn't noticed. I did not know that about you.
They'll be a type of t-shirt, they'll be a type of t-shirt.
They're representing.
Official believe.
They're only working, they're only working.
They believe what they believe is best.
So, we have no dots, and we can just cross those off.
So does.
Wow. You said we couldn't do that before we started the exercise. Okay, so, thank you all for doing that fairly efficiently. Actually, this tells me that this plan was done fairly, it's fairly thoughtful, because the dots are spread pretty widely, and it's not all sort of lumped in, in one bucket. Quite a lot of support for vision for growth and development, one absolute top priority there, kind of mixed between the comprehensive plan and the visioning, lots of dots on sustainable service delivery, and boy, look at all those, eight people in the room and eight dots on the budget process, although probably two of those are the, both a green and a gold that are together, lots on additional revenue sources, one caution on independent program efforts, on economic development in downtown, fair amount of support for faster broadband, some caution about the airport business plan, a caution about downtown and codes for overall, for older buildings, a few priorities there, critical infrastructure, quite a lot of dots on maintenance and prioritization and general obligation bond strategy. I think these two may be focused on sidewalks. Environmental action, a lot of emphasis on the climate action plan, but also a couple of cautions, that's probably not surprising. Public transportation, some support there, a little bit of caution on the development regulations. Health and social services, lots of, lots of support for the sobering center, and rental assistance for homeless, a caution on local social services, and fair amount of support for site selection and design for affordable housing, oh, that's got a whole bunch, one, two, three, four, five, six. So, the budget process and the site selection and design for affordable housing are the, got the most overall support, but like I said, fairly balanced across, across the whole spectrum, and probably the biggest overall cluster in sustainable service delivery, which shows that you're taking your job as a city council pretty seriously. Observations by any of you about what you see up there?
Counselor Anderson.
I am proud to report that two of my fellow counselors put the red caution buttons on me.
I couldn't find a better place for him. So, that's interesting, that will inform where we're going, so, that brings us to the end of our time together this morning. Let me see if I can recap what the next steps are, and Steve, correct me if I'm missing any beats here. We will get notes out from this meeting fairly quickly. If the environment work group wants to impact what's going to happen at the public meeting on the 19th of September, we're going to need that seven days before that to have any chance of incorporating it into the materials we're preparing for the meeting.
Three days.
Which is, which is probably not very likely, that meeting's coming up really fast. If, if, if that environment work group wants to impact the strategic plan that are recommended to the council for your second meeting in October, we need that input by September 30th. After we have the community meeting, and after that September 30th time goes by, we will prepare a ranking exercise for you to do individually and return back to city staff based on what we heard today with edits, well, what we heard today and input from the community. So that'll be, basically, you'll be reacting to a pretty final sort of list of issues, and then, at your normal time before your second meeting in October, you will get a recommended strategic plan from Steve for you to consider at your second meeting in October. Did I get all that right? Steve?
Yes, other than, well, and I would, I would suggest that, well, first, the environmental meeting's not going to occur before the 19th, not if the work group wants to continue to have the robust involvement from interested, informed stakeholders and the people that have been able to participate so far. So I, I guess, as far as direction from council, my, my direction is going to be, the strategic plan is going to follow the timeframe that Brian just outlined for you, with the environmental issue with footnote it saying it's still catching up and more work needs to occur, more discussion needs to occur, unless you want to tell me, no, slow down the overall strategic plan to allow the environmental issue to catch up.
I'm not clear on why, why not slow, what's the rush? If this environmental issue is that important, why aren't we taking time with it? I don't get it. I'm missing something, so, maybe it was the part of the meeting I missed. You all explained why you're in such a rush to get this into the plan without having public involvement.
Well.
If that's what's happening.
The, the, the part that happened was, we reduced the goal to adopt an environmental action plan. Then we added as one of the bullet points.
Yeah, that's correct.
Oh, adopt an environmental strategy, excuse me.
Somebody give him a script.
Yeah. We, we reduced the goal to, prepare a community-wide environmental strategy, period. We added as one of the actions, the seventh bullet point of a climate action plan. So, it seems to me, the only change that I would have proposed on the wordsmithing is to make that a little broader, to say something like, prepare a community-wide environmental strategy that reduces the city's environmental impact.
Yeah. So is that something you live with and you would want as is the?
Might not let the manager write it up that way.
Yeah, and that's fine with me. And then we may not have to have another meeting.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, wait a minute, I want a meeting, Chuck. I don't have enough meetings.
The problem is that if the public isn't allowed to participate, we will hear from them.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, I guess I would move to change that to, to what I just read, to prepare a community-wide environmental strategy that reduces the city's environmental impacts. And if you want to take it, you could just say, prepare a community-wide strategy that reduces the environmental, the city's environmental impacts. And then, we don't need to have another meeting.
Go ahead, Counselor Nanki.
Well, that should be kind of part of the strategy, and a lot of times, people think that it's only about reducing the negative impacts rather than promoting the positive impacts sometimes as well, which could be community education, and so, I always try to leave that portion out and just have it as, rather than reduce negative impacts, your strategy should be dealing with both the good things you do and the bad things that could potentially result from your operation.
How do you say that?
By just saying, develop a community or wide environmental strategy.
Well, I'm actually, I'm fine with that as long as the climate action plan is one of the bullet points.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I'm, you know, I think I could live with the goal of just being less, more broad than what I said.
It's wrong.
So Courtney, I'm sorry to say that what.
I just typed in.
It just got edited while we, while you were typing.
Yeah. But thank you for typing, that's fantastic.
Well, that's, that's helpful direction, and then we'll prepare the, the, the community feedback instrument that'll be going out Monday, as well as preparing for the community open house with that language. Thank you. And second, on the, on the.
Let me make sure we, hold that thought for a second. So, I think we are getting, maybe we're approaching agreement, that we're, we are editing this environmental action goal to say, prepare a community-wide environmental strategy, and we are adding an action that says, develop a climate action plan that prioritizes reductions of greenhouse gases, emissions. And we're saying, that, now this is adequate for community input on the 19th, and we are not going to make an effort to have another committee meeting before the strategic plan is finished.
It's done.
So we're going to change it from draft to, we're going to.
Well, like everything else, we will, we'll put it, pad it all together in a package for public comment on the.
This issue has caught, this issue has caught up with the other issues.
Yeah. Everybody, I'm seeing agreement with that. Okay, cool.
Except for all this.
And.
Keep all that.
Oh, yeah.
Keep all that.
It's a long list.
Well, and that's where we were given direction on the, both vision and growth and, and critical infrastructure, that we should only have two or three, which will make it also difficult in the forced ranking, because, you know, you look at environmental and we got seven, eight.
Those will be competing with each other.
Right. And some of them, it's like, what does that really mean?
Well, look at the grade out, we can reduce that. Comprehensive program to reduce emission, that's, that's pretty.
So you want that cut?
Pardon me?
You want, you would not mind cutting that?
Yes, so, yes, included in the greenhouse gas emissions. So we can get rid of that, and then we're down to, and who's going to vote for regular reporting? I mean, I don't know whether.
Regulatory, not regular.
Well, it says regular.
Oh, I thought I saw regulatory over on that, though.
It does.
Yeah, it is.
And nobody voted for it either way.
I think it's, I think the discussion is keep it updated, is your idea there?
Yeah.
Leave it in.
Good.
I think it's fine as. And for forced ranking, we may want to actually look at the individual item before we hit that.
So.
And if I may, Brian, on the forced ranking, while we'll strive to have it be meaningful for you for the October 19th council meeting, it may certainly spill over to your January work session, which will be more focused, really more focused on your work plan, the policy agenda for the upcoming year, while the October, what you'll be adopting in October is this overarching strategic plan, which is really a multi-year plan, three to five years. So I'm, I'm less, I'm less concerned about having that ranking done for October. We'll certainly strive for that, but it may, it may slip into being more meaningful for you and for the staff for the, prior to the January work session.
And I would, I would also encourage you as the facilitator who's from out of town and, and don't have to keep coming to work here every day, be tolerant of when we get, we're going to, we have the input today, and then we have the input on the 19th, and then Steve is going to come back to you with a draft, with a plan for adoption, and I would give him enough leash that he can think through the wording of some of these and, and make clarification edits, you know, you can check his work, but I think, I think it would be appropriate to think through some of these lists, as Counselor Nanki is saying, some of them are longer lists than others, and maybe there are things, I just, I think a little, just grammatical editing and sort of clarifying is probably helpful by one author when you get right down to the end, so I hope you'll be tolerant of that. With that, I, my part of this meeting is done, I'll give it back to the mayor.
Thank you, and unless there's further comment, we are adjourned.